And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
All members of council are present. Would you believe it if I said we had no requests to amend the agenda?
No.
Don't believe it.
No.
We have several. The first is to add reports of standing committees, and the first is finance, audit, and budget. And then the second is housing, health, and safety. So those are under reports of standing committees of council. We have three ordinances to add. The first is, under ordinance three, would be an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir Corporation for Section Avenue Improvement, and that one is for the Ross Avenue up to Worth. Then ordinance number four is the same, the J.K. Muir Section Avenue, and that is Ross to Dale, because those ordinances are very similar. So we'll consider them in that order. And the fifth is an ordinance regarding Mound View Storm Sewer to make emergency repairs. That would be ordinance five. We have two additional communications, a letter from Tim Maloney regarding bank reconciliation from March 2019, and under communication number four, a letter from Chief Wallace regarding the ladder truck. You got that, or you need me to repeat it? You're good? What's your pleasure? Mr. Breeden.
I want to make a motion to amend the GMS statement.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the June 11th, 2019 meeting. They were distributed prior to the meeting via email. Mr. Clark?
Would you approve the minutes as if read?
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Mr. Thompson?
I'll be abstaining from the vote since I wasn't here for that meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other discussion? The motion is to approve the minutes as if read. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Abstain.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
Six ayes and one abstention, the motion carries. This is always fun when we get to hear some good news for change, and so we get to meet our newest K-9 officer and his police partner, Beau Regard. So Chief Kramer, you want to come up and do the introductions? I think at the last meeting you talked about a life-saving award, but from the sounds of it, Beau might have had a life-saving incident as well.
Thank you for letting us introduce our new member tonight. We're very excited about this. Before I bring Phil and our newest member up, I do want to recognize a few people that kind of made this possible. First off, and they're here tonight, and when Phil comes up, if they could come up with them, that would be great. The Haverchamp Foundation gave us the funds to purchase the K-9, and I don't remember the exact amount, but I can tell you it's a substantial amount of money. It's not like going to your local pet store and, you know, spending $1,000 on a dog. We could not have done this without the Haverchamp Foundation. Also, a huge thank you to Ohio State Patrol. They gave us a spot at their K-9 Academy, which Phil just got done attending. They charged us nothing for that spot. So a very big thank you to OSP. Also, to the mayor and the Safety Service Director, Mr. Gears, for allowing us to do this. Thank you to them. Lieutenant Hicks, I don't know, he's supposed to be over here, I don't know where he's at. He was instrumental in just organizing everything and getting this done. So our newest member, well, actually, I have received this today. If I could read it real quick, it's from Bridget Kelly, who is with the Ohio House of Representatives, and she sent us a, I guess what you could call a proclamation. "On behalf of the members of the House of Representatives of the 133rd General Assembly, I extend well-deserved congratulations to Sir Beau Regard of Norwood." That is the K-9's official name, but Beau for short. Is that right, Phil?
Okay.
"On his new employment with the Norwood Police Department, this exciting honor is a testament to his devotion to law enforcement and a reflection of his hard work thus far. His time in K-9 school prepared him well for a career with Norwood Police Department, and I am excited to see the impact Beau makes in the community. Beau's promotion is also a reflection of the endless love and direction that human caretakers have shown, which helped him to become a public servant. Beau's dedication to unconditionally protecting the city and citizens of Norwood is exemplary, and I extend my sincere gratitude for Beau's commitment to Norwood and keeping the greater Cincinnati community safe. Thus, it is with great pleasure I commend Beau as an inspiring pup and an outstanding Ohioan. Bridget Kelly." So Phil wants to step forward, and also the Haverchamps, that would be great. You guys can meet Beau.
Wherever. Totally up to you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Same out there.
Obviously, you could just talk a little bit about what you were training in Dale, how long it was.
See. So Beau is a two-year-old Belgian Malinois. His birthday is actually June 6th, he just turned two. He's what's known as a dual-purpose dog, so he's trained in narcotics and also searching. So he can locate suspects who have committed felonies, and he can also locate missing persons, missing children, missing adults, things like that. So he's going to be a huge asset to the city. All of his commands are in German. We spent 12 weeks up at the Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy. So like Chief said, huge thanks to them for everything they did for us. Completely free training, and it's continual. It will continue every Monday we meet in a Ohio State Highway Patrol group, and they continue to train us for free. So Beau is going to, not only is he already highly trained, but he's going to continue to maintain that standard of proficiency. Huge, huge thanks and shout-out to the Haverchamp Foundation. They provided this dog for us, Nancy Haverchamp's here. Robin from the foundation is also here. And then also to my supportive girlfriend, who allows me to have a Belgian Malinois at home, and supported me in my mission, and my parents for telling me to pursue my goals, and I finally have achieved that. This is something that I've wanted to do my whole life, becoming a K-9 handler in law enforcement. I think it's going to be great to have the extra tool out here in the streets. His first four hours on duty, he would stop the car, he sniffed it, and he located fentanyl, heroin, and cocaine, as well as 16 syringes. So we got a felon off the street four hours into his first shift. The following day, we were tracking a wanted felon through Warren Avenue from an address where we've had a lot of problems. We ended up catching him later that night. So he's already earned his paycheck, so he gets a lot of hugs and a lot of treats. So if you want, I'll bring him in the middle there.
Okay.
I kept looking back there, but I forgot he was standing right there, I'm sorry.
It's very pretty.
It's a good boy.
So people have asked if you, if they're out on the street, are they, can they pet him?
They cannot. Not yet. He's still too new, so no petting him for right now. I would hate for something to happen. He's very social, he's very subordinate, he just wants to do things to make me happy, keep me happy. As you can see, he doesn't like to take his eyes off me. He wants to know what we're going to do, what he can do to make me happy, so that's a good characteristic of having a dog. So it wouldn't be an issue. I haven't had any problems with people at home and family members who do pet him. So I just wouldn't want a member of the community, especially without asking me, to come up and try to pet him, because he may perceive it as a threat. Part of our trainings we have, I put him in this position, not on a leash, and I pat down somebody who's wearing a bite sleeve and a full bite suit, and as I'm patting him down, they push me to the ground, and he jumps up and he'll bite me. He's trained to attack them. So if I'm patting down a felon out on the street and they start attacking me, he's going to go into that automatic mode, automatic drive of, hey, I've got to protect my dad. So I wouldn't want anybody to pet him, no, without, he's just too new.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the council's support and everything you guys have done for us.
Mrs. Hanahan, you want to?
It's good to keep this program going.
Beau's beautiful.
Can you tell us how old Beau is and how many years he can be in service?
He is two years old, he just turned two, and dogs, their time in service, it varies. Especially with somebody that's going to be working as hard as Beau is, he's going to be putting in long hours here, and he's going to be doing a lot of work here in the city in order to, I can already see that. We've done five days of shift work already, and two days ago, we used him four different times. We sniffed three different cars, and we tracked a wanted felon through a bunch of backyards in 87-degree weather. And that kind of thing takes a toll on a dog, so he can't, I don't think he could do that every day for eight or nine years on duty. That's going to be, that's going to be a lot on him. So it just varies. The K-9 we have now has been on for...
Almost eight years.
Eight years. And he's looking to retire that dog as soon as possible.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say congratulations to your department, to you. Wonderful to have a Ser Beau Regard here in the city. Happy to hear about the bust as well, so it's exciting for the citizens to have this opportunity, and so thank you for all you're doing to help make this happen.
They should be excited. All the law-abiding citizens in Norwood should be very excited about this. He has a very high work drive, he wants nothing more than to work, and to him, everything's a playing into a game. So every time we go out and we can be training, or we're going out and we're sniffing cars, he's going to get this toy that I have in my pocket. So the whole thing is just a game for him. He loves playing, but for me, it's work, and it's catching felons. He doesn't know that. So he has a high drive to do that, to play and to want to go out and make me happy and get this toy, and in reality, we're keeping the citizens of Norwood a lot safer, and he's having a huge impact.
Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. What a beautiful specimen. I had a dog as a childhood named Beau, so his Beau for, short for Beau Regard. Can you spell that?
Sure. It's B-E-A-U-R-E-G-A-R-D.
And it's Ser Beau.
I'm pretty sure I'm only going to call him that when he's really bad.
It's beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations.
I get a lot of compliments on him. Thank you.
And, you know, I just, I want to thank the Haverchamp, I want to thank the Haverchamp Foundation. It is, that is amazing. It is an amazing gift, under any circumstances, but especially in a fiscal emergency, you have no idea what this means to us, and I just really want to express our gratitude to you for this really fine gift. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Sankar?
Would either the chief or one of the representatives want to explain a little bit about the Haverchamp Foundation?
Okay. So the foundation is in memory of my son, who is a K-9 officer for Gulf Manor. So almost 15 years ago, we created this nonprofit foundation to raise money to help police departments with their K-9 units, because that was something that we saw made a huge difference for Gulf Manor and other communities, because you'll probably hear Beau and Officer Harvey will likely get called to assist other communities if a dog is on duty. So we saw what a huge impact that made, and how important their work was. Well, Beau is number 60, the 60th dog that we purchased. Now we're up to 66. So we know what a wonderful tool and resource these dogs are and their handlers, who spend 24/7 taking care of this dog to work in your community and keep you safe.
And where do you get your funding? Can people contribute to the foundation?
Absolutely. We have two major fundraisers. We have a 5K in April at Spring Grove Cemetery, and I think it'll be April 7th in 2020, and then we have a golf outing coming up July 20th. So we're always seeking supports from, support from the departments that we've helped fund to pay it forward. We also have a fundraiser coming up Sunday at Fred Ford Brewing in Blue Ash from 2:00 PM till 8:00 PM, and they're going to give us a portion of the proceeds. We have split the pot, there'll be a band, silent auction, and they're also having a yoga class to benefit us at 10:30 that morning at Fred Ford. So yes, if you follow us on Facebook, we try to keep that up to date. We have a website that's not so up to date. We're all volunteer. All of the money that we raise, except for a few accounting fees, goes towards funding canines and equipment to support them.
That's amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So Beau is the second dog that we funded for Norwood. You might not know that. We funded him more as well.
Oh, okay. And I think we're going to see him next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all he's wanted all night.
So didn't you have to learn German, though? You had to learn German. Ach, du liebe. Thank you all. All right. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is to a veto override of a resolution condemning a communication from the Service Safety Director to the Chief of Police in reaffirming council's support for city employees. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we override the veto.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I was absent from the special meeting that took place, I think it was late April, where this resolution was presented. I've since watched the meeting and understand that the actions taken at the meeting and the reasons behind it were really out of an effort to make clear some expectations around how city employees engage with each other. Had I been here, probably, not probably, had I been here, I would have said then what I'll say now, which is, there's been hit-or-miss conversations around having a handbook, having procedures in place like that, and I think at different times, especially during this recovery process, it's been thought to put some procedures in place and put some accountability in place, and that's something that I think we still have opportunity to do. I don't think that the intent to create a new order, so to speak, came across us clearly through the resolution, though, and that made me kind of sad. Nonetheless, as I've done in other meetings, when I'm not present, I'm going to be abstaining, since I wasn't a part of the original effort, and just wanted to voice that to the other members of council.
Thank you. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So I do want to make it clear that if, in order to override the veto, it has to have five of seven votes to do that. So if there is a member that is abstaining, then that member is essentially voting no on the override, because it's based on the number of elected council members, it's not based on the number of people that are voting, as some motions that we vote on do. I would say that the original resolution, I thought it was clear in its intent, even if it didn't have everything that it needed, but that it was acknowledging that there are disagreements, it was acknowledging that things are not perfect in the world, but it was also stating that we need to treat each other with respect, and reaffirming essentially our support for our city employees, which wasn't necessary, but I thought it was important to do. I would encourage every member, essentially, so the council passed the resolution, the mayor has vetoed it just on regards that he just disagrees that we should be taking the action that we do, but this is council's action to take. This is our, it's a resolution, we weren't committing the city to anything, we weren't committing the administration to anything, we were just asking that there be some respect given. And so, I just, like I said, I hope that all of us do vote to override it, because whether you were here or not, obviously, we understand the issue that's at hand, and if we support the idea of the resolution, then I just truly believe that we should support the overriding that veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Thompson?
Madam President, I'm not going to rehash, what was in the original resolution. I want to say that I know that we, I believe we passed it four to two, and I completely understand and respect the position that Mr. Sankar and Mr. Breeden dissented for the resolution. What I'm going to do is, even though you dissented on the resolution, ask you to aid us in overriding the veto, and I will ask why, and it really has nothing to do with the nature of communication or what was even said in the resolution. What I would like to ask is that, or point out is, what we were doing was just, as a council, stating something that we believed for the public record, and we wanted it to be stated strongly enough that we put it in a resolution. It's non-binding, it's not an ordinance, there's no anything behind it, other than it is just our council's voice. In vetoing that, the mayor has attempted to take away our collective voice, and I understand that not all of us agree, but that's the reason why we have votes on things, because we're not always supposed to agree. But we do, we stand by the decisions that we make as a council, and so I think that this was a decision that was made by a council. It was just a resolution, it was just a communication, and it was just an idea. And I don't want us to, in an attempt to prove a point about the nature of the resolution, give up that power that we have as a council to make a point and to have our voice heard simply by the stroke of a pen of one other individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to override the veto. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
No.
Mr. Breeden?
No, sir.
A vote of four to two and one abstention, the motion fails. We do have requests to address council, but none of them are on agenda items, so we'll deal with those a little bit later on. We have reports of standing committees of council. The first is finance, budget, and audit. Mr. Bonzal?
Madam President, this is a point of order. You said none of those were regarding agenda items? I was under the impression that a couple were.
There's nothing on our agenda about parking, there's nothing about...
There is.
Oh, I am sorry. Okay, you're correct. We will deal with those then, when, right before we deal with that ordinance. Thank you. So we will move on to Finance Committee, or Finance Audit and Budget Committee. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we are committee of finance, budget, and audit to whom is referred miscellaneous items, begley to submit the following report. We received information on a quote for fixing the traffic light at Section and Ross for $8,750 approximately. We recommend moving forward. We received a letter from Jerry Stoker regarding certification fees for Mark Reeves. We recommend Mr. Stoker close open POs and then open a PO for the certification item. Item three, we reviewed the annual capital asset review and have additional questions for the auditor that will follow up with him on. Item four, we would like additional information on the financing for the Highland Avenue Street Repaving Project. And then, item five, we reviewed bids from various bidders for Section Avenue repaving. We recommend moving forward with the lowest bid for the full project at $186,350 from the street fund. Respectfully submitted, James Bonzal, Andrew Clark, John Breeden, Leslie Stevenson.
Mr. Clark?
To receive and file the committee report.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to repeat to the people that concerns them that in this, in this is the start of the project on Section Avenue in Ross, and a lot of people are going to be happy about that, so I want to make sure we get that out there. So Section Avenue in Ross is in this paperwork, and I'm very happy about that, I know a lot of people are, so nice work, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is Housing, Health, and Safety Committee regarding building department fees. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee Report Housing, Health, and Public Safety, dated June 17th, 2019. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we are committee of Housing, Health, and Public Safety to whom referred building department fees. There was discussion concerning fee changes in the building department, building permits and plan reviews for Norwood schools, and fees being waived for handicap ramps in Norwood. Respectfully submitted, Marilyn Hanahan, Chairperson, John Breeden, Andrew Clark, and Joe Sankar.
Mr. Breeden?
I'd like to make a motion that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say, this was one of the meetings that I would have liked to had taped, and it was my error, I apologize, it didn't get on air. And I'd like to say, before this comes to council, the building, the fees, I would ask Pam to make sure when the agenda goes out, that a copy of the fee schedule that we're promoting would be in there.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have the third reading of ordinances about prohibited standing or parking places, and we do, I apologize, we do have three people who would like to speak on that. The first is Darryl Martin. Would you like to come forward, please? If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Hi, my name is Darryl Martin. My address is 4010 Carter Avenue. And I'm here about the issue of parking in front of a private driveway. And I grew up here in Norwood, and the rule has always been that a car had to be three feet from the apron of your driveway. And I live where the university has a lot of problems with the students all over the place, I understand that, but, and I get somebody to leave their car, or they park right in my driveway, or up on my driveway, and I call Norwood, they come out, they'll ticket them, they've actually towed a couple of people, I guess they're bad, I don't know. But I make a call for one that's parked in my driveway, and the officer comes out and tells me they're not in my driveway. And he brings me a copy of the new law that's on the book that says that you can park up on a driveway. It gives no stipulation about where that is, no measurements, nothing, that's all it says. And I actually brought a picture of the car that was in question on this, and the officer that came out was sergeant, and he said this was okay. I took the picture down and I showed Captain Kramer, and he said, no, that's definitely in your driveway. So my, I'm here, I would like to get this turn-back time, or whatever we have to do to get the three-foot rule in effect, because it was there for a reason. When you have an apron, you don't go out and turn, you have to turn out of your driveway. And the picture in question...
You might want to send it to council.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm new at this.
No, you're fine, you're doing, you're doing well.
But it's a big problem where I live, and I actually have a truck and a trailer that I have to come in and out of my driveway, not all the time, but when I do, and there's no way I can turn right coming out of my driveway. And the house in question on one side of my driveway is a Norwood problem, everybody probably knows that house, but she was renting it out, and she's got two renters, and they And the house in question on one side of my driveway is a Norwood problem, everybody probably knows that house. But she's rented it out, and she's got two renters, and they try to park two cars in between the two driveways on each side of that. So it's always on my driveway. And that's what I'm trying to get straightened out. The one officer said that was okay.
I wonder how any law that...
Well, that's, I mean, and I was real nice, and I accepted it, because the rule did change, and there was no stipulation that he had to go by to say that where was legal where wasn't. And so that's why I'm here, because there's no stipulation on it, and I would like to know exactly where that is. If it's a law, it should be a little more detailed than you can park up on the drive.
What happened was, if I may, on behalf of council, what happened was, we updated our codified ordinances, and we adopted new state codes. Norwood had a more stringent restriction that said the three feet from the curbs, or from the driveways. And mistakenly, as part of the update, that was taken out. And so there is an ordinance that, I believe, Mrs. Hanahan asked to be, could you ask for this? I don't remember, Ms. Stevenson? That's right, Ms. Stevenson asked that it be drawn up, and that would reinstate that three feet.
The original?
Yes. And so we're having the third reading of it this evening, and if it passes, then it will, and I can almost guarantee you it will pass, it will go to the mayor for his signature.
I would really appreciate that.
And we will update our...
It would be a big help for the law enforcement officers.
I'm sure, I'm sure. All right, thank you, Ms. Breeden.
All right. And Leslie will let me know if it passes or doesn't.
If you just stick around for a couple minutes, you'll know.
I hope I don't have to meet with you again.
Soon as we're finished hearing from the public about this, we're going to vote on it, so you'll know very soon.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Next is Eric Wade. Good evening. If you'll give us your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes.
My name is Eric Wade, I live at 4121 Ivanhoe Avenue. I've been there since 98, not around. I just came to support the previous opinion. It's beyond comprehension to me that we're even having this conversation. I don't know how it happened, or why, but it's just plain common sense. Unless you want to drum up tickets for domestic disturbances, I have no other idea why this would even happen. I'm sure it's a simple mistake, I just wanted to put my support out there for reinstating the three foot, and that is all.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was Ms. Stevenson brought it to our attention, that when we updated the code that was mistakenly taken out.
Nobody's perfect, but it matters, so I'm here, and I just wanted to say and give you my two cents, and that's it.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I know we talked about this, when was the code, when specifically did this change? Did we act, did a previous council, or was it us, did it get changed from what we had before to the state version of it?
Can you answer then?
Thank you, Madam President. It was in the new version of Chapter Five, or Three, that Walter Drain prepared for us, which was this thick, I mean, that particular sack chunk of the code. And it's one of the sections that just, that got slipped through, that change that Norwood had made in 2006, just wasn't, the fact that it should have stayed with what Norwood had, we just missed it going through it.
It was an update.
Yes.
So just, I mean, just to follow up on that, is this from when we just recodified ordinances, just recently?
Yes.
So you're saying that during that recodification process, there were various, maybe state, various things that kind of mirror state statutes, and you're saying there were things that would automatically change in that process without us coming through and looking at each item?
Is there more?
Thank you, Madam President. I, they took what the state changed, the state changes, and they incorporated those over the last, since 2011, the things that had changed. They incorporated those into our master code, and that involved, it involves a lot of things. One, it's the structure is different, the numbering is different, there's some things that just need to be, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in order to do that, especially when you've got eight, nine years of changes to make. We went through, I went through actually, all of the things that Norwood had passed since the last codification to make sure that whatever those were, were captured, you know, any specific changes were captured. But the stuff that Norwood had tinkered with previous to that, I didn't know, I did not cover that. And so it's just one, it's one of those things that slipped through, when you're talking about that big of a project covering that many years. And to be honest with you, there may be things in 11, which is the building, or the zoning code, there may be things in the criminal code that have been, that that kind of thing has happened, because those were huge, big chunks of text that were entirely replaced, as opposed to, "We're going to tweak this, we're going to tweak that."
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you. Just as a follow-up, or I guess a comment, I mean, I would just like to ask, when these recodifications happen in the future, I mean, I think that we should be getting a list of items that are changed, like, I was kind of surprised to hear that there were so many extra changes that we didn't get a list of, that this council never approved. And so, I mean, I understand the reasoning why, because the state, things change all the time, and you do want them to try to match as much as possible for various reasons, but I mean, just something to consider when we go through recodification again, because there could be a lot of other stuff that might have gotten, that Norwood had tinkered with for our own purposes, that could have been lost if we weren't going back and reviewing that when making those changes. So something to consider, something that I'll definitely be asking about when we do recodification in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Madam President. That's pretty interesting, that's pretty interesting there, so there could be other things left out that we don't even know yet.
We would have...
But I just want to thank Mr. Martin and Mr. Wade for showing up tonight, and anybody else at here for that.
We're not finished, we got one more.
I'm sorry, what?
We have one more, so...
Oh, okay. Well, whoever else, I appreciate you guys coming. It's just a shame that, that common courtesy for neighbors can't be, you know, the stay in age that we live in, that we just can't have common courtesy for neighbors. And I would urge that people out there, to park three feet from driveways, it's common courtesy. So to me, it doesn't need to be wrote down, but I understand, I appreciate you guys for coming, and I would urge that residents just use common courtesy for your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Next we have Brian Shepherd. Again, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name's Brian Shepherd, I live at 4121 Carter Avenue, right up the street from these guys. I don't have much to add, other than what Darryl and Eric already said. Thank you, Leslie, for bringing it forward, and thank you, Keith, for clarifying, because I talked to you about it the other day. Yeah, it's going to pass, right? Three feet from the apron, that's what we need, it's common courtesy. But more problematic for me, that probably has nothing to do with you or anybody else, is if there's a clerical error, or some kind of an error like this, it's not that big a deal, but it is problematic if we have officers coming and interacting with us, and not recognizing that this is not in the spirit of the law. For whatever reason, they would, they would tell Darryl, "Hey, look, I can see this, this is clearly blocking your apron, but it's okay according to the new law," or according to whatever oversight it was. That's problematic for me, more so than anything else that's going on, because we're doing this the right way, and it's going to change, because everybody understands that, that's how it ought to be. In the past, when I've had to call the police officers to come because someone's blocking my driveway, it's always been very pleasant and reasonable, and that's how it ought to be, because we're interacting with the police force, and that's how it ought to be. So for what it's worth, I take issue with the fact that somebody could see this and say, "Oh, this is okay." You're going to have to go talk, you're going to have to go talk to the chief and have them tell you that it's not okay, that just doesn't sit right. So, thanks in advance.
Thank you. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, if this happened again, I would say if the officer comes out, and that picture is there, and they're saying, you know, there's nothing they could do, I believe you can always ask for a supervisor to come out, and there's always a supervisor on duty.
Well, I mean, he actually brought a copy of the new law in the book, and the old law, and so I understood where he was coming from, because all it said was park him on the driveway. And so who's to say what's right and what isn't? So, you know, I gave him the courtesy of understanding, he didn't, he didn't actually know either. And I've actually had a couple of officers come out, in the meantime of getting here, and everybody has their own opinion. So it's the clarification, and if it's going back the way it was, it was perfect, and nobody ever has, but I would ask, I'm glad we did that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now move on to consideration of the ordinance, an ordinance amending Norwood codified ordinance, Section 351.03, prohibited standing or parking places. Mr. Sankar.
I recommend we have the third reading of the ordinance, please.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I have had people call me saying they really want us to do this. You can't get out of your driveway without three feet. But at the last meeting when this was brought up, I had also mentioned how far you park from a corner, and it went everywhere. And in the same ordinance at the bottom, it doesn't say three feet from the corner, it says three feet from the sidewalk. So you can, and I've had people ask me about that since, if I had found out what the answer was. And it's actually, you can't park within three feet of the sidewalk, the edge of the
I'm confused.
Within the, you can't park at a corner over the sidewalk, you have to be three feet from the sidewalk to park.
I think it's thirty feet.
Am I, I'm not...
Mr. Sankar.
Yeah, I got it.
I believe you should talk about, when you come to a corner, it's all sidewalk, so you have to be three feet from that.
From the sidewalk.
Sidewalk area, not from the double strip to the sidewalk. But like, on the...
I thought you meant from the corner, I was like, no, it's not three feet from the corner. That's my, I misunderstood, I apologize.
It was three feet from the edge of the sidewalk.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to personally thank all the residents of Norwood who came out. I very much appreciate, A, Mr. Martin bringing it to my attention, but for all of you to make time to come, I've said before, and I just want to underscore, after you vote, you still have a part in this process. So if you have an issue, especially as Mr. Shepherd shared, that seems like it's an oversight, please bring it to our attention, please come and talk about it. It makes a wealth of difference to hear from you as residents than us. So thank you, thank you for sharing your time, and I'm glad that we are having our third reading tonight.
Ms. Stevenson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the third reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the third reading.
Ordinance amending Norwood codified ordinance, Section 351.03, prohibited standing or parking
Mr. Sankar.
Recommend the ordinance be passed, please.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. It's passed. Thank you.
I got to end the work. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to introductory reading of ordinances. The first is an ordinance limiting the amount of a blanket purchase order to a maximum of $25,000 in compliance with ORC 5705.41D. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So, just so everyone understands, a blanket purchase order is essentially a purchase order that a department head or might submit that would cover a multiple of items, potentially from multiple vendors, around maybe some general topic, but it doesn't even maybe have to be around a general topic, it could be around whatever. And so the problem is that it just makes it harder for kind of accounting and tracking about what the heck the intent of that is, if you start having very large purchase orders about very general things, so anyways, the intent of this is just to provide more accountability and more transparency for citizens, so that's why it's here.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Thompson.
Just for clarification, do we have a, do we already have a cap of greater than $25,000 currently, or do we have no cap?
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I have not heard of a cap.
Okay.
I don't think there is. And this was part of the report on accounting methods that the state did as part of the fiscal recovery, was their recommendation.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance limiting the amount of a blanket purchase order to a maximum of $25,000 in compliance with ORC 5705.41D. Ordinance limiting the amount of a blanket purchase order to a maximum of $25,000 in compliance with ORC 5705.41D.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we would pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, next is an ordinance amending Section 1305.05, fees of the codified ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio, to waive certain fees for handicap accessible ramps. Mrs. Hanahan.
I move we have the first reading.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I brought this ordinance out, due to, I have a friend who recently, her mother needed a handicap ramp. To my surprise, the cost was between $8,000 and $9,000. These, I, nobody wants to put a handicap ramp on their house, and I believe that these people are already enduring some sort of hardship. And I just think it would be a real courtesy to our residents, that, just to help them out some. And these fees are determined by the amount of the cost of the project. This would not help my friend if anybody's thinking that she's already, taking care of hers is already done. But I would just like to see, you know, it's just a courtesy to our residents, to give them a little bit of a break, because when you're spending that amount of money, it would still, they would still be having, they would still have to pay for their plan exams, we would still go out and inspect all of that, we would just waive the fees. And this was actually brought before the committee, the Housing, Health, and Safety Committee, when we were talking about fees, and it was agreed upon, you know, by everyone. To bring it to council.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Councilwoman Hanahan for bringing this to our attention.
I too agree. I think, you know, this is something that happened, it's a rare thing that people unfortunately don't want to have to do, but get in cases where they need it, and so this can help ease their burden just a little bit. So I think this is a great idea, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
An ordinance amending Section 1305.05, fees of the codified ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio, to waive certain fees for handicapped accessible ramps.
Next is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir Corporation, the lowest and best bidder for the Section Avenue Improvement Project, JMA #4061, within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. And to be clear, this one is for, I want to make sure, that this is for the $153,450. Mr. Sankar?
Question of clarification. Madam President, I know we approved the amending, the agenda, having this ordinance as number three, and the other one is number four, but based on the recommendation from the Finance Committee of having the street done from Ross to Dale Road as their recommendation, I didn't know procedurally if we'd be able to move Ordinance Four in front of Ordinance Three for consideration, because if that would happen to pass, then there'd be no need for Ordinance Three. Didn't know what, if that procedurally, if we're able to do something like that.
If you are certain that you could, that you're going to pass the second one, you can always remove this one. We can move to amend it again if you want to. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I also agree with Mr. Sankar that we should definitely consider the Ordinance Four first to go from Ross to Dale. So I would like to make a motion to remove from the agenda, Ordinance Three, the first reading of the first ordinance that goes just from Ross to Worth.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Clark? So the motion on the floor then is to remove Ordinance Number Three, which is the $153,450 for Ross, just to Worth Avenue, just to be clear. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. For, basically for $30,000 more, we'd have the section done from Ross to Dale Road. From Dale Road down, it's already been complete, it's already been resurfaced. For $30,000, I think it'd be well worth it to have that completed, because I would believe if we didn't, and we stopped at Worth Avenue, we'd be kind of a laughingstock of why did you, because the other side's completely done from one end to the other. So I think if we're going to start the job, we should finish it at Dale Road so it's complete and as the recommendations was made earlier. So that's my --
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. I have to agree with Mr. Sankar. Is, just for clarification, is this the three catch basins also in this, right in this bid, what we're looking at? So it's $30,000 extra from Worth to Dale, but it's also $30,000 extra for the three catch basins? Is my right on that?
Mr. Bonzal?
The catch basins, from my understanding, are included in both bids. So the $35,000, or $30,000 extra is just for the repaving portion of the project to go from Worth Avenue to Dale Road.
Okay. I thought in, I thought I saw $10,000 for catch basin.
Yeah, if we wanted to --
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. If we wanted to eliminate, if we wanted to reduce, we could reduce the cost potentially by approximately $30,000 more if we wanted to eliminate the reconstruction of the catch basins. But it's recommended that we do them at the same time, because it would be a lot more expensive to go and do them later.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. That's my understanding. Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Just wanted to clarify for people who may be watching at home or here, for, we're basically taking, we've got two ordinances. One is for a long bit of road, the other one's for a short bit of road. Removing the one for the short bit of road, because we think the long bit of road is going to pass, so just putting in layman's terms for people who are watching.
Correct.
Good.
Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to add a comment. In the Finance Budget and Audit Committee meeting, in our report, we did discuss this. And at the time, I was asking a question around the financing of this. Now that we have all this together, it makes a lot more sense, and so I appreciate the layman's reiteration of what we're hopeful to do here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. And just for your information, the financial advisory folks, excuse me, have approved both of these, so we have the permission to move forward. Any other comments? The motion on the floor then is to remove the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will now consider ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contact, contract with J.K. Muir Corporation, the lowest and best bidder for the alternate bid for Section Avenue Improvement Project, JMA #4061, from Ross Avenue to Dale Road, within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. I would not vote for all the three readings tonight. I'd like to know, and I'd also ask if we could get a copy of the report from the engineering consultants.
This is for the Section Avenue?
God, my mother. Excuse me.
You're okay. It's in the air tonight. That's all right. I didn't, I, you're fine.
We're here still. I'm sorry.
All right. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir Corporation, the lowest and best bidder for the alternate bid for Section Avenue Improvement Project, JMA #4061, from Ross Avenue to Dale Road, within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir Corporation, the lowest and best bidder for the alternate bid for Section Avenue Improvement Project, JMA #4061, from Ross Avenue to Dale Road, within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir Corporation, the lowest and best bidder for the alternate bid for Section Avenue Improvement Project, JMA #4061, from Ross Avenue to Dale Road, within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Breeden?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Finally, the last ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a time and material contract with Ford Development for up to $60,000 to make emergency repairs of the storm sewer system, beginning near the south side of Mount View Drive, around 2503 and 2507, and running south toward Highland Avenue, within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hanahan?
Do we have the first reading?
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I just, this issue came up a couple weeks back, a couple meetings ago, when we had discussions about getting the testing done, and since that time, the situation up there has worsened to a point where there's, there's more sinkholes that have developed within the sewer line. So that was the reason for this coming forth. I know at the last meeting, I know Mr. Gary had mentioned that the Safety Service Director couldn't proceed with the testing and that without a, you know, just making us aware of it. But actually, to have this work started and to have some work done to try to rectify at least the immediate problem, this will only rectify the storm sewers and the sinkholes in respect to that waistline going down. This has nothing, I'm not saying nothing to do with it, but until this is corrected, the testing can't be done to find out what actually is causing the rest of the slippage of the hillside. But this actually is a problem that was actually found with the cameras and that, so maybe you can request the information, but the longer we put it off, the worse the situation's going to get. I just, if anybody wants to ride up there, you're more than welcome to walk back and actually see what's going on, and it's not, not pretty.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. And Mr. Moore, you have information. Could you share that with council, please?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have the engineering, technical engineering reports. I have a whole pile of emails and photographs, and I didn't think council wanted all copies of all of this giant stack. Essentially, the idea was there were issues, so the city was going to do some testing in the process of getting easements from the property owners there to allow people to go on and do the core samples and do the testing on that. One of the owners hired their own, had brought in an engineering firm, and they took a look, and what they reported, they then sent to us, and we conferred with our engineers, there's two different engineering firms that have looked at this. Because of all of the rain in the last few weeks, it's really, really starting to deteriorate quickly, and something needs to be, something needs to be done very soon. Both firms, the Service Safety Director, everybody's on board. This is the step that needs to be taken. The storm sewer line is at least blocked, if not collapsed, and needs to be taken care of as soon as we possibly can. So the request is that council will pass this ordinance, and we can get that taken care of to prevent more sinkholes, more damage to structures, because it's getting to that point for those property owners there. And to hopefully, hopefully, we're not looking at a potential slide down onto Highland, but we don't want to take that chance. So we're hoping we can get this done as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. A question to you, if I could. Has the Fiscal Recovery Commission reviewed this ordinance?
Um, no, this just came up. I can certainly, we can try it. It does come from the general fund. But no, this just came up this evening. Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I would say that there's definitely money for this in the public lands and buildings, which is probably where it would come from, and, I mean, the fiscal, the financial supervisors do not, I feel, well, I don't know the exact --
I can tell you that if they're emergency things, they will also take care of emergencies.
Exactly. And if they truly had an issue with it, then they would just stop it from going into effect anyway. So it's, I mean, I don't think they have an issue with it, I don't think they will have an issue with it when they hear about it, because they already are aware that the hill is sliding. And this specifically, it, this is to fix our storm sewer, and so it's not to reinforce the hill, there's not, there's other things that are going to have to be done by somebody at some point. That's not, this is, we're going to have to fix our storm sewer anyways, at some point. And it's not a question of if, it's when, because the water from Mount View, it has to drain somewhere. So if we, considering how, like, much reading that we've had, I would just say this, we only have one reading of this tonight, which firstly, I would like to maybe have more. We should probably plan a special meeting very soon to finish this off and authorize it, so that work can get started, because it's deteriorated significantly in the past few months, and there's really, it, once we just, I really wish that we would not wait another two weeks to consider this, if we're only going to have one reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Yes, Mr. Moore?
On the timing, this has been put together very, very quickly. We actually did the ordinance today, and when I got back, I got into City Hall at about 20 after 6:00, and we were, Tim was finishing it up, and we were reading it at that point. We're at the point now where Ford needs to know, because they're putting, they are now, they've sort of gotten the preliminary okay from Mr. Gears, they're putting together the equipment and the people to start this on Friday. So if we possibly can, if council could pass this tonight, that would be fantastic, and I really ask that you do that.
Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. I just need to be a little, we have, we have a slot, we have a hill sliding. This is on the, below that, this is a catch basin below that, this is Mount View. Our landslide is on, is on, what street is the landslide on?
So this is a, there is a catch basin on Mount View
Mount View.
That is close to the sidewalk, that goes, that drains down the hillside toward Highland Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is broken, and therefore, the water is seeping out of the storm sewer, and undermining the, we think might be undermining, we don't know, but for sure, our sewer is broken.
So, thank you. And, 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 so before, two weeks ago, they wanted us to vote, they wanted us to do a testing. So now we think maybe, because they found a break, they found a break, and they want to fix that.
First, to stop the damage.
I think that makes perfect sense to me. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Sankar?
From the street where the catch basin is, as it goes down, there are two manholes in between the two properties there, down to the main manhole collector, down at the bottom of the hill on Highland. So there are
It's like a cistern or something.
Two different ones that, and that's where they, I believe, were the separation.
At one point in time, it was kind of like a cistern, I think, and that held the water and then sent it down, but it's, yeah, it's collapsed. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, just want to say, I'm happy to withdraw my second, if Ms. Hanahan would like to.
Well, maybe we can amend the motion, Mrs. Hanahan?
Absolutely. I'm happy to withdraw my.
Do you want to amend it to suspend, or do you just want to withdraw?
I'll just withdraw.
Okay. And you'll withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw as well.
All right. So we're still left with, what would you like to do with it? Mr. Clark?
I'd move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of this ordinance.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Bonzal? Discussion? Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just be quick here, I just think that this is a, I'm glad to see this versus the $10,000 for testing versus this. I think this is much better for our money, and it could be our problem, so, thanks.
My guess is that we will still probably do some of the borings and do the testing, but we need to stop the problem of the storm sewer right now.
If we have a broken drain, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I do recommend that Mrs. Hanahan ask for like the documentation that we would have on file, and I think she should get a copy of that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The documentation that Mrs. Hanahan was asking for, and Mr. Moore referred to, I think possibly, she could get a copy of that, give them a better understanding of kind of what's going on.
Mr. Moore?
Sure, I can forward everybody these strings of pictures, pictures that have changed in the last week, the size of the holes, kinds of things, so, yeah, I can forward those things to people. Sure, I can forward everybody these strings of pictures, pictures that have changed in the last week, the size of the holes, kinds of things. So, yeah, I can forward those things to everybody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, as I kind of indicated before, I'm going to be supporting this. I mean, the risks here are if this is what's causing the issue, and we don't fix this, where the sinkholes are still happening, and one of those houses on Mound View falls down that hill. I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to me that the city potentially could be, have some liability there. And so it's a lot of money, I know, and, I mean, it sounds like we're pretty, we're good with it, but still, it's important for citizens to know that it could be a lot worse if the city is, in fact, if our broken storm sewer is what's caused all of this and potentially could cause much more damage to property than it already has. So that's why I'll definitely be supporting this and looking forward to the work getting done.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Call the rule, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a time and material contract with Ford Development for up to $60,000 to make emergency repairs of the storm sewer system, beginning near the south side of Mound View Drive around 2503 and 2507, and running south toward Highland Avenue within the city of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a time and material contract with Ford Development for up to $60,000 to make emergency repairs of the storm sewer system, beginning near the south side of Mound View Drive around 2503 and 2507, and running south toward Highland Avenue within the city of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a time and material contract with Ford Development for up to $60,000 to make emergency repairs of the storm sewer system, beginning near the south side of Mound View Drive around 2503 and 2507, and running south toward Highland Avenue within the city of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the rule, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye the motion carries. We'll move on to other requests to address council. And the first is Emily Franzen. If you'll come forward, thank you for your patience. If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
All right, thank you. My name is Emily Franzen. I live at 4207 Porres Avenue. I'm here today to talk about the current ordinance we have for Norwood that prohibits beekeeping. I feel that this should be repealed.
Excuse me, can you speak up or pull the microphone up, please? We want to be able to hear you.
Sorry, ma'am.
Thank you.
It seems to be sagging a bit, much like my spirits. I am an entomologist. I currently keep bees on Xavier's campus. I would like very much to keep bees within the city of Norwood. However, right now, there is an ordinance prohibiting such in Norwood. And because I am a law-abiding citizen, I have not put bee hives in Norwood. So I feel that it would be good for not only me, but also anyone else who's interested in beekeeping to be able to do this in Norwood. The city of Cincinnati already allows bees there. So the bees that I have in the hive are already in Norwood, because they forage up to five to 10 miles from their hive. So Norwood is less than five to 10 miles across. All the bees are already here. Why not have them live here, too? So I would be happy to take any questions and address any concerns. I know one of the major concerns is, of course, bee sting. I know we have small lot sizes here. However, Cincinnati also has small lot sizes. They have not had any issues with that. And bees, once they're five to 10 feet from the hive, they go up at least 30 feet and usually much more to find their next foraging spot. It's not like they're shooting around everywhere. They're going up above the houses until they find their flowers. Is that right? Thank you. And I don't know if I can take questions?
Sure.
Love to.
Questions, comments? Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if you could talk about, we know that bee populations are in decline around the world, not just in our country, and the importance that they have to, not only communities, but to agriculture. What would keeping bees within the city limits do to help that issue?
Well, any sort of extra help that bees could get by having more hives around and just having more people aware of what bees need would be really good. Norwood obviously is a very small part of the world, but every little part helps really. And I think by having bees being kept in Norwood, people would ask about it. Maybe they would think, oh, I could landscape my garden, be more bee-friendly. So it would help not only pollinators, like the domesticated honeybee, but also our native pollinators, which are also in severe decline. Yes.
Mr. Braden?
I'll thank you, Madam President. So, I'm sorry, I lost my train. I know that there's different types of bees. So do you have a specific on one type of bee? Or is it, is this honeybees?
Yes. This is the European honeybee. So that is the main domesticated bee that the vast majority of people in the United States keep. This is a bee that's domesticated for several thousand years. It is not native to here. However, it is a huge part of pollination of a lot of our crops, like melons, cucumbers, not corn and soybean, of course, but a lot of other major fruit and vegetable, or fruit crops depend on these, like the European honeybee.
Can I follow up?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So if we was to help you with, and bring forth some sort of resolution or ordinance, is it just for a certain, certain type of bee? Or would that be for, what would that look like? Would it just say honeybees? Or could we also have other types of bees?
Well, right now, for most codes, the Ohio Revised Code covers apiary law, actually, in Section 909, if you want to look it up. And it covers the genus Apis. So Apis molifera is a scientific name of the honeybee. That's really the only kind that's easily kept around here. So any law that you would make would cover that. Right now, there's also native bee houses, but there's no laws in the state of Ohio, or indeed, I think federally, that would prohibit any sort of bee houses of that sort. These are not bees that make honey. These are just bees that would use like little bits of bamboo. You may have seen them around. They're becoming more popular now. But that's not, that's already allowed. So what I'm focusing on is simply this domesticated version, Apis molifera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. I will just say that there are beehives in Norwood already. There's at least one that is on a, it's just great. It's a random place, I'm not going to say where. But I will just say that the bees are very, if you go to this person's porch when you're out campaigning, you might notice it. And it's very fascinating. And they don't really disturb you, so I guess that's one thing. But we did have talk, so back to the actual subject. We did talk about this like three years ago, I think, in the Housing Committee when Marilyn and I first got elected. And there was somebody that was a non-homeowner that wanted to come and present the plans. And I think the direction that we were going was looking for more homeowners at that time. I know that you all are. So the question, the thing is, I think that maybe there could be a potential to revisit that again and have it looked at. So I'm not sure which committee would do it, Law Ordinance or another one, but I wouldn't mind at least learning more and hearing more about it.
If you would like to learn more, I'm actually having an event on June 30th, a Sunday, this coming Sunday, at 2:00, at our hives. It is on Facebook. The event is called Better Know a Bee. It is weather-dependent, because bees don't really like rain, much like me. So I'm hoping that the weather will cooperate for once this summer, and I'll be able to show people the hives. We'll also be harvesting some honey, so be able to sample some of the honey that comes from some of the flowers in Norwood.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for coming and sharing. I was going to ask if you could, one, repeat the event date, time, location, but also, could you share more? What exactly do you do with the bees at Xavier?
Oh, yes. So first, the event will be Sunday, this coming Sunday, June 30th, at 2:00 p.m. It will last approximately an hour, hour and a half. We will be opening up the hive, demonstrating proper hive care techniques, and harvesting some honey. And as far as what I do, oh, yes, sorry.
Is that event at Xavier?
Yes, it is at Xavier. I have the GPS coordinates of the hive on there, because it's not a proper address. But if you know where the basketball courts and the tennis courts are at Xavier, it's right in between those.
Thanks.
And I'll try to make it clear on the event page, the best way to get to it from the majority of Norwood. As far as what I'm doing at Xavier with them, right now, it's mostly an educational and outreach opportunity for myself and the other people who like keeping bees. So my husband is another person who has been doing most of the maintenance. He's here today. And my friend Dia is also interested, she's here supporting me. Hi, guys, sorry. And I want eventually to potentially work with local businesses to use the honey in various products like mead. But for right now, I just want to try to build up the hives, use them as an opportunity to have people learn more about beekeeping and give honey to some of the people who have supported us on our way. We got a grant from Xavier through their Women of Excellence program to put these hives on Xavier's property. And Xavier is also moving toward making their campus more pollinator-friendly. So we're working with the people that are doing that as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. And finally, we have Glenda Smith. And again, if you'll give us your name and address, and thank you for being patient, you'll have five minutes.
My name is Glenda Smith. I'm an attorney here in town, representing families and children for over 20 years. My address is 30 Vermont Avenue. Thank you, Madam President, council members, administrators, community, for allowing me to speak. I'm here to invite you to come on to 88.3 FM to talk about any type of community programs that you have for families and children, because those programs preserve family integrity. And if, do you have any questions? And if you don't want to come on, you can shoot me an email, and I'll announce whatever program you're having for families and children. I'm not opposed to that, so. And I'm sure that we've all been benefactors of programs in our communities that were very helpful in our upbringing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you take some questions? Or?
Yes.
No, I was just going to ask for contact information.
Sure, so you're passing on. So we can just, if we are not radio folks, we can get you some information, and you would announce that on the radio?
Yes, you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. We do have several things coming up, so we'll get together with you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? None? I'm going to start off new business and just ruin your evening, so. Earlier today, we had the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meeting. There was a discussion regarding fire and police staffing levels. As you know, the mayor sent a letter in May to Chief Wallace of the Fire Department, telling him to begin the hiring process and to try to get to 49. And then it was his intention to follow the contract and get to 52 by the end of the year. In June, a similar letter was sent to Chief Kramer, instructing him to expedite the hearings after the test had been given to, again, try to get to 52 staffing prior to the end of the year. That is in conflict with the financial recovery plan that the mayor presented him was sent to council and approved by council by resolution. My understanding is that the financial, as I recall, the financial recovery plan was at 49 for the Fire Department this year and 45 for the Police Department. And that in the Fire Department in 2020 and 2023, because of retirements, we were going to get to 45, as I recall. Is that correct, Mr. Bonso?
That is correct.
Thank you. So the letters is not, the letters were not consistent with the financial recovery plan. And we were informed that if the financial recovery plan, that we need to revise the, either the mayor needed to withdraw his letters or we needed to revise the financial recovery plan. Because right now, we are in conflict with the financial recovery plan. The consequences of not adopting a new financial recovery plan are onerous. There are sanctions that are imposed in ORC 118 that says if we are out of compliance and no adjustment is made, that all funding from the state of Ohio will be cut off to the city, with the exception of to individuals or to families, you know. So that would not be affected. But any monies coming to the city, such as permissive tax, gasoline tax dollars, those things, would stop. And we would revert to, the general fund would revert to last year's spending for that month reduced to 85%. So whatever was spent, say, in July of 2018, we would be permitted to spend 85% of that in July of 2019 if we do not revise the plan. There was a very long discussion about if this, if this was even possible. The commission ultimately gave us 40, 45 days to come up with a new plan, for the mayor to come up with a new plan, presented to council and for council to approve it. The commission isn't, they're not meeting until later on, but they want time to review it as well. So the, the plan, the commission is meeting on the 20th, so 45 days from today. I had it written down, and I don't know where it is. Double check, is August the 9th? That's D-Day, folks. The commission does not vote whether to impose those sanctions. It is Ohio Revised Code law. So the commission passed a resolution that I will ask you to distribute. It was unanimously passed. That says we are out of compliance and that we have 45 days to comply with the Ohio Revised Code to restore the fiscal integrity of the city. There was discussion about 118 versus 4117 again. And if anything takes precedent, nobody can give us an answer. But a lady from the Office of Budget and Management was here to tell us that it is unfortunate scenario. The mayor asked, has been asking, when we are in fiscal emergency, we were told to pay off our debts. He was asking if contracts are considered debts. No one will give him an answer. No one will let us know if any, if contracts take precedent over the fiscal recovery plan. Long discussion, but the Office of Budget and Management made it eminently clear that there was no vote of the commission. It is law that unless a new plan is adopted within 45 days, we will be out of compliance and those sanctions will come into effect. The commission cannot change the plan. They either vote yes or no, and so they want to make sure that it's a viable plan. I don't think the financial advisors will allow it to be presented to the commission unless it's a viable plan. We discussed about the due diligence. They asked whether, how the last plan was done. I assured them that there were many eyes that looked at it in the preparation of it. So it's not been a good day. I'll answer any questions that you have, if I can. But that was the gist of the meeting today, and I assured them I would bring it to council tonight. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. I believe they also said that the plan had to be submitted to the committee within 45 days. But then the committee can send it back to
Correct.
council and the mayor for additional work, for additional time. So even, it just has to be a plan, a viable plan, that we would see as a viable plan, needs to be submitted within 45 days. The committee could then say, eh, you know, they can't tell you what to change, but they can say...
They can send it back and say, we don't agree with it.
Well, we think you need to take another look at this and send it back, so then you do get more time. So it's not, they have that option available to you to extend more time, so.
They can't make changes, but they can say, okay, we don't like this. We're not going to approve it. You need to go back and start over. Or you need to make changes or whatever to bring it in compliance. But we're on the clock. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the copy of the resolution. I wanted to just recount the dates you outlined. That was the point of clarity I was aiming for. I believe you said the commission meets on July 20th. Were you giving us that date to say that is the day before the deadline of August 9?
We are not meeting on the 20th.
You did not say that?
No.
Okay.
We are next meeting on August the 20th.
Oh, I'm sorry, August, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
August 20th.
And that will allow the commission members time to digest it as well, to go over it.
So when you raise...
August the 9th is when we must have the plan passed by August the 9th into them. And then their meeting is August the 20th.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I'd like to remind everybody that when we were given the fiscal recovery plan to begin with this year, we had about 30 minutes to review it before we passed it. If we are giving the financial committee 11 days to digest it before their meeting, I think we should be expected, or we should expect I think we should be expected, or we should expect to have a similar amount of time, at least five, I mean, at least 10 business days, to review a complete plan before we plan on voting it. If it has to be, we can work back, I don't know, on our first, I mean, we could do it from August 9th. I don't care. Fact of the matter is, is I want serious time to consider the financial plan. I want it to be well thought out. I want to know, honestly, if I could have my way, I'd want it within 10 business days. You know, we can discuss if we'd like to do that, but I would like for us to set concrete days. We expect to see updates and plans. I would like to suggest we have concrete numbers on the expected range of costs to bring totals back up to what's in the contract. I would like multiple recommendations from the mayor and the administration on what services they would plan to cut to enable us to bring our complements back up to what is in the contract. And I would like to have proper time to digest, review, and for us to debate what is in that plan, send it back on our own for revisions before we do that. So with 45 days, that's not a lot of time. So I think we should pull out our calendars and start figuring out when we want to see things.
I couldn't agree more. There is, the auditor's office has prepared a document that I didn't bring with me this evening, but he has prepared a document that estimates the cost of bringing the police and fire up to full complement. And if nothing else is done, as I recall, that document estimates that we would, in five years, we would be $4 million in the red.
Right. And that, just follow up, and that's fine. And I'm
And I'll share that with you.
I'm less concerned about where we are five years from now and where we are six months from now. If, I'm trying to think, how many total police? Do we, 51, 52?
52, I believe, plus the chief.
52. So that's seven. Fire going from 45 to, anybody, what's fire going to? I'm sorry.
52 plus the chief.
52 plus the chief. So fire goes 52. So we're looking at, we're looking at seven and seven over both departments. I'm just spitballing numbers here, but let's average out about 100K per person?
More than that.
Well, I'm saying, I'm just spitballing numbers. I think it's really easy for people to add 100K times 14 in their brain, and that's about $1.4 million added yearly to our budget that we, well, I don't know, we, it's, the mayor has to figure out what he wants to cut. And I make a, I hope a compelling argument to me if he wants me to vote for it. But $1.4 million is quite a bit. I, you know, I don't know, Mr. Bonso, you look at the numbers, what departments add up to $1.4 million? How many, I mean, what's the Health Department?
They're $300,000.
$300,000 for the Health Department. What is Parks and Rec? I should know that.
It's around, well, I'm not sure. We just added more money to it.
Right.
I'm sure it's
In 2018. $200,000.
At the most.
We're not a third of the way there yet. So I look very much forward to seeing the recommendations from the city administration. I like spreadsheets. I like bullet points. I like PowerPoint presentations. I hope it's compelling.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. I'd like to echo everything Eric said, because I was going to say it. Not only did you get the last plan at three hours before, the first one we did, we got it while we were sitting here at the meeting. The meeting had started before the plan was put in our hands to vote on. My concern is, you said 4 million? Did I misunderstand you?
It was if everything remained the same in the contracts. It was
About 4 million?
And I, you know, I apologize, I don't
My fear is this is going to come right out of streets and parks.
Is I just, you know, I'm gonna, I will get that out to you. I don't recall.
Okay, please do.
But he did, he did do one that was just the Fire Department, when it was sent to the Fire Department, and then he added one with the Police Department, and then he added one that included the insurance and things. So I, you know, there's, there were different papers and, I'm just saying that we were a substantial amount in the red, and I will be happy to share those. I'll go home and scan them and I'll
Thank you.
Send them out to you.
And like I said, I'm, you know, I'm afraid this is going to really screw up our streets, which is number one on all our residents' minds. And I totally forgot my point here. Oh, yes. I mean, we can't force the mayor to give this to us in 10 days, or, you know, 10 days prior. So I'm hoping somebody can come to some kind of agreement with it. Maybe Madam President could do that.
I mean, if that's your wish, I would say
Because if we get it the day of the, I don't care, you know, if we get it the day, I won't, the day of, or even two days before, I will not vote for it. Because we need to be properly prepared here, and we never are. Or we are backed into a corner to vote for something.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan.
Madam President?
Yes, just more.
If I could, it's not really my place, but I feel I need to. A lot of the time between when the mayor has, it seems like there's been a huge delay in our auditor and in the state auditor running final math on the plans. So the mayor's been done two weeks, three weeks before the plan comes to council, and they've been running those numbers. And so just a suggestion is for council to reach out to the mayor and say, listen, when you get to that point where these are your recommendations, before waiting for the final accountants to go through and double check everything, please let us know what kind of the recommendations are. Because that seems to be a huge delay. Because there seems to be people are out, or there's communication problems in getting those numbers back and forth. And I know that he's been concerned about presenting something and then a week later, it turns out, oh, you can't do that. And then, you know, dealing with the fallout from that. But I think that that may be worth, that may be the place where the communication can stay open, even if it's not technically feasible to have the final approved plan 10 days from now or 15 days from now.
I think it's entirely appropriate to, if you want to draft a letter to the mayor and the financial advisors, that it's imperative that you get that at least 10 days ahead of time. I think that's perfectly within your, they know that we are under this timeframe, you know, this time crunch. And I don't think it's unreasonable for you to write, put that in writing and ask that they expedite the matter so that you have time to digest what's in it and to see if it is viable. Mrs. Hanahan?
If I could follow up on that. Quite honestly, I don't care what the reasons are we don't get it. I don't care the excuses. It's their responsibility to get it to us. And with that said, I would like to ask the clerk of council to write a letter explaining just what we said and what we're looking for in a time commitment.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Bonso?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So before that letter is written, and I actually think we should take a vote on this so that it's crystal clear that this is a unified effort of council, I would like to see this plan at the next council meeting. I mean, I don't think we can, he's known about him wanting to, well, he's known since the veto ordinance was passed that he was going to do this. And I will just say that if he's known he's going to spend all this money by that time, then he should damn well know where he's going to get the money from. And so that is
I'm going to ask that you not
Sorry, sorry. I apologize.
We are not going to do unpersonalities here.
So, well
So you're out of order.
So I will just ask again that we need to know, we need to know way sooner, because potentially, we're going to have to override a veto to get our version of the plan passed if we have to make changes. And so we need to get started on this earlier, because as we saw tonight, like, it takes a lot of time to get, to do vetoes, thanks to all the things that are in the financial recovery, or all the things that are in Ohio Revised Code. So, yeah, so that's out there.
On the record, the mayor expressed frustration in that he was following the financial recovery plan. And I'm the secretary, so I tried to take as best notes as I could. He's expressing frustration that he follows the financial recovery plan and that when we go to arbitration, that we haven't prevailed, and that people have dug their heels in now. And so it's made it impossible to negotiate with the unions. They don't trust us. And he's hoping that this is a way to make some kind of movement on negotiations. So I just wanted to get that into the record, since he's not here to defend himself. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize. I wanted to watch the fiscal recovery meeting and I didn't get a chance. Wondering if there's any discussion on even if this is allowed. We passed a plan presented by the mayor. Council voted and approved it, and then now we have someone going and doing something different from the plan. I mean, the point was made in our finance committee meeting, what stops another department head from going and just spending whatever they want? I thought that was the purpose of this plan, was to guide our spending. And it's just very frustrating that the person that presented the plan to us is now deviating from the plan. Lots in time and effort. I too will echo that I would love to have this well in advance. It's very frustrating, the time and effort that all the people put into this plan that, so, very frustrating tonight, obviously, I think we all are, but definitely well in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I have, do I guess, are we finished discussing this? No? Mr. Bonso?
Mr. Brayden had his hand up.
I'm sorry. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Madam President. I've got a couple, I've got a couple responses. You know, I have some good news. This council has been working very hard in moving money out of funds and saving and I'm trying to, I'm trying to make my comments in order here. So, you know, I wanted to recognize our storm drain system, that from Forest to Highland Avenue, that's 85% complete. That's awesome. We just, tonight, we're talking about Section Avenue from Ross to
Damn.
and Highland Avenue. I mean, these all are projects that are, that are defunded. So, you know, someone told me to thank Mr. Sankar for his involvement in the Forest Avenue project. So, but, but all that's in jeopardy, you know? I mean, no one wants to, no one wants to vote firemen and policemen out of work. That's not what, what I saw, that's not what I was voted here to do, so. But all those good things that we are doing are in jeopardy, because we have to have money to do that. So I don't know what the answers are, but, you know, Mr. Williams, I'm sure he has his reasons. I don't know what they are. I'd like to hear them. I know that we are going to have a new administration very soon. And I guess my thoughts are, how long does it, does this hiring process take? Is this going to be in the middle of the two administrat, I'm just very confused about the whole situation. So lots, lots more questions to come. Those are my statements. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I listened to part of the meeting. I mean, I again was at work as well, so I could not hear the whole thing. But there was definitely a part that I was able to hear where the mayor was blaming everybody else for why he had to do this and making every excuse in the book, when it's been pretty unified, the three and a half years since I've been on council, we've all been very unified, well, I would say at least two of those years, we've been pretty unified about the direction that we're trying to go when it comes to trying to regain some of the management rights in the contract. And I will just say that the mayor's been on board with all of this, like, the numbers that were presented. I mean, I was in the meeting with the mayor, the financial supervisors, Marcus Patterson, the deputy auditor, where it was brought up, like, okay, so what's, again, what's the number? And the mayor reaffirmed that he wanted 45 for each department. He, it's his number. It's the number that came up. Now, I'm not saying I don't support the number, because I obviously do, because I voted for it, and, you know, I recommended that we all support it at the meeting. But it's the number that he also came up with. And so for him to now come back after we present the resolution in question that was not overridden tonight, to come back
Mr. Bonso?
Are you calling me out of order, Madam President?
I'm calling you out of order.
Okay. I will readjust, but at, the timing, well, we now, all of a sudden, three months after we pass the financial recovery plan, we are at the point that there's an abrupt 180. And it really, the first letter was sent in May, so really, it was two months after it. And it's frustrating to me that, you know, I've talked to April Ann Mary, the financial supervisors, I've talked to Jim Stitt, I've talked to our law department. It's frustrating to me that I can get no answers on the role of council when it comes to being a check and balance to the city administration on spending. And that, you know, we have appropriation, I thought we had appropriations for a reason, appropriations to limit spending to a certain level in any individual key that we choose to do so. And that that can't be exceeded, except for some rare exceptions when it comes to, like, legal fees, and there's a few others. So we're to the point, though, that apparently it can be exceeded, as long as there is a political will to do so. And I've asked to try to figure out, how do we stop this hire? How do we, like, actually be the check and balance that the Ohio Revised Code, in my opinion, like, says that we should be? And I'm having a hard time getting any answers. I am going to have a very hard time supporting any financial recovery plan that alters the numbers that we've already passed. It's, I mean, it's literally about the streets, it's about the parks, it's about the recreation center, it's about the condition of this building, it's about everything else. It's about a fire engine and a ladder truck. Because I can pretty much guarantee you, and this is, you know, anybody that wants to hear it can listen, if we have to pay for hiring seven or four, however many new firefighters, and have to pay for those for the next five years, that we're essentially, there's no way we're going to be able to afford a ladder truck and the engine. It's almost $2 million in equipment that we are not going to be able to afford now. And so it's about all of this. Like, our citizens deserve better. And I hear from, I've heard from the mayor that, oh, they're talking about all this stuff that they're going to spend. We were asked by the Financial Recovery Commission and by the financial supervisors to consider a capital expenditure plan. We were asked to look at that. We were asked to start planning ahead of time for things that we need to spend. And we started that process. We paused the process after the mayor decided he was going to, he sent the first letter. But the process was started and we were going to get it done. But yet, because we're talking about this, this is politicking, you know, we're just trying to win an election. And it's frustrating, because, one, there's an election every other year. So I guess every year, we get one year, we get to do stuff, and then one year, we can't do anything, because it's an election year. I keep hearing that from the mayor all the time. It's an election year, it's an election year. Sorry.
Nice.
Thank you, sorry. But this, we're just doing what we're asked to do. And frankly, every other
A better way to say it is that it's a requirement to come out of fiscal emergency, to have a capital improvement plan. That might be a better way to explain it.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it might be the politically correct way, but it's, and that's fine, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President. So we have this capital improvements plan, and like I said, we've talked about it, we're trying to get there. Every other city does planning for spending. Now, usually, it's the city administration that does it. But unfortunately for us, it has to be council that does some of this stuff, because we don't have a city administration that's doing the work that every other city does. That was an objective fact, Madam President. So with that, I just want to say that I'm really frustrated, and I really do hope that we get the financial recovery plan at the next council meeting. He already knows what he wants to add to it. He just needs to figure out what he wants to cut. It shouldn't be easy for him. It shouldn't be hard for him, excuse me. He can just, he seems to have the ideas, and he seems to know what's going on. So I really think that we should demand having at the next council meeting. So we have time to review, we have time to pass something, and potentially, we have time to override a veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Mr. Thompson?
Did I hear you correctly, and again, I wasn't able to watch the meeting today either, because I was working. But did I hear you correctly saying that the mayor had hoped that this would maybe spur negotiation, contract negotiation?
Correct.
I've got, so odd I was going to talk about this during New Business. Several months ago, or weeks ago, time moves strange, the mayor asked us to consider passing a resolution saying that we would automatically abide by whatever
Arbitration.
It was largely a symbolic resolution, and meant as a form of goodwill. And I recognize that. I would like to remind those of us on council, though, that we have one job when it comes to contract negotiations. I was involved in a lengthy Facebook discussion this past week with the president of the North Fire Union, where he made the, I think, a false accusation and, if the law director would please wave his arms frantically at me if I'm wrong in my assertion here, that council is using the fiscal recovery plan to avoid bargaining in good faith. The false assertion is that the council is bargaining. Council doesn't bargain, and we don't negotiate. We do have one job, and that is to approve a contract or to disapprove a contract when it comes to us. So essentially, we were being asked to give up the one little bit of power that we have in this entire process. Now, I realize it was meant in good faith. But looking at that and looking at what's going now, I'm not inclined at all to give up any of the power that this council has. We actually gave up some of our power earlier today in failing to override a veto. I don't want to give up more power to, I don't care what administration or what department, we have power and we have a voice. So I was trying to think, we can't force anybody to come to the negotiating table. We can't compel anybody to, council doesn't have that kind of power. But I was thinking, what can I do personally? What can I do to What can I do to incentivize all parties involved to come to the table? And I had this idea that if one party, and I don't care which party, attempts to set a meeting with the other party and that party declines, for whatever reason, let me know, and during New Business, I will be happy to announce that one party attempted to set a meeting to negotiate with the other party and the other party declined that meeting. I don't think it has anything to do with actual negotiation or anything like that, Mr. Moore. I think it's just purely releasing information. If one party sets a meeting, the other party agrees to it and fails to show up for that meeting or cancels that meeting, give me proof that that happened, give me an email chain, and I will read it here on council floor. And we will let the people know who is agreeing or who is attempting to do their job and negotiate a contract. And we will let the, the community know who is failing to do that for them. Because I think the community wants us, I got a huge feeling that the community wants the administration, the unions to be able to come together and work on a contract. I want that. I want that contract to come to us, and I want the ability to review that contract, to weigh it against our financial recovery plan, to choose whether we want to support it or not. That is our power in this situation. That is our job in this situation. This, I think, is another attempt to, to grasp for power and to grasp for solution. I, I don't think there's animosity, and I think that there's just trying to come up with a, a way to make these negotiations happen, to make some kind of forward process. Well, I think it's a very, very poor way to try to do that. I think that the two sides should at least try to come together and come up with something. We understand that it's going to be somewhere in the middle where one side wants and one side the other. I'm willing to take a look at any contract that comes and try to adjust a fiscal recovery plan to make it match as long as there's some kind of consensus. But what I don't want to do is be party to brinksmanship and game playing that hurts this city. And in, in the end, that's what this does. This hurts the city financially, it hurts the city from a relationship standpoint where, once again, we're at, we're at odds, where our city and our representation is at odds with our unions. We have unions for reasons because our employees need representation. There's no reason that we should be at odds with each other. We need to be working together. We've got two unions, or two departments, I'm sorry, police and, and fire. They're our two biggest departments. In 2018, they accounted for roughly 70% of the, the city's expenditures, 68 and a half-ish, 69. So, I don't know, we can't blame our fiscal problems on them. But when you've got two departments that total 70% of our city's budget, then we need them to come to the table and be part of the answer to our fiscal problems. And we need the administration, we need the mayor to be willing to come to the table with them and let them be part of the answer. But instead, we find ourselves in this situation where we're at odds and we're going to potentially have to cut hundreds of thousands of dollars from a remaining 30% of budget. We're trying to run a city, the rest of the city, on 30% of a city's budget. There's a lot of city beyond public safety. Public safety is very important, and we appreciate every single person who contributes to it. But we also have this big picture, a big city, that we have to take care of with 30% of a budget. This decision cuts into that 30%. This decision hurts the city more than it helps it. I look forward to hearing from all parties involved about their attempts to negotiate with each other. If they need to use what the mayor has done now as their inspiration, by all means, pick up the phone, write an email, have a beer, do it with lawyers so it counts. If that doesn't work, send me a message. I would love to tell everybody about it. I would love to tell everybody how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with every bit of that, Eric. I think those are, that's, you know, we're in agreement. There's a few, a couple, a couple of things there that, that stand out to me. And I know what you mean when you say power, the power that we have. I look, I don't look at it as our power, I look at this as my duty. And then I'll, I just want to bring this up because I feel like my duty as a councilman has been represented here today with the veto override. So, that's, that's the one thing you said that I, that I had taken a little, I, I don't really think that way. I, I do know what you meant when you said that, so I understand what you mean. I personally think my duty was represented today by the override, and that's, that's where I stand. So, I, I don't think we gave up anything. I think it was represented by that override. So, that's the only thing that I have to say about that, but everything else you said is right on point and, and I agree with you. So, thank you for, for those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Mr. Thompson.
I totally understand about the veto. You know.
Nice job.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
I just want to thank Mr. Thompson. I agree wholeheartedly. I think that was very well said. I too want to echo what Mr. Bonzal said. I would love to see a plan by next meeting, just, I mean, I know that's really quick, but all that we're going to have to accomplish, and I have a feeling we're not going to agree. So, I think seeing all that and all that we'll have, all the steps that are going to have to take place to get this done in 45 days, let's get moving because we want to work on this.
Mr. Stith has begun that process, thankfully, so we do have some numbers to plug in if, you know...
Yeah. Thank you.
And I express appreciation for their office for what they've been doing. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to thank Mr. Thompson for what he said. I wish I spoke as well as you do when you have something to say. And for Mr. Bonzal, I agree with both of them. I know as all of us have done our politicking before, you know, you go to doors and the two questions, last time I was out there from almost everybody was straits or contracts. And they kind of are running into each other here, which is really sad. But I would like to ask, if I could ask our law director, if council has any legal standing here since this takes us out of compliance with the, with the plan to stop the hirings right now?
Mr. Moore? I'm not sure what you mean by council standing. As far as the, as far as the fiscal emergency portions of the code, in theory, it's illegal to do anything that doesn't, that is in violation of the code. I'm not sure exactly how that would be enforced. Council obviously wouldn't be the body that would do it. I'm not sure if the state would do it, if the county prosecutor could theoretically prosecute someone. I don't know if this would count for that. Just on the larger question, how much authority does council have in this question? It's an open question. Can council just simply, we're going to pass, we're going to pass a fiscal recovery plan that completely ignores the contracts? I don't know. As far as we know, nobody's got a definitive answer on that, which is what the state auditor has, has come out and said. There's opinions both ways. Until it goes basically to the Ohio Supreme Court, nobody's really gonna know. I don't know if it will ever get there. So, we're in kind of uncharted waters here. And quite honestly, it could have been, you know, I'm not sure what, what instituted this. I don't know. The thing is, if the mayor does, we're going to go ahead and hire this, I'm not sure. And I'll get into the, like, is this actually a violation of the fiscal recovery plan? I don't know if the numbers are the practice, are the, the most important thing, or like the actual, oh, we're, we're going to figure it's this many bodies are going to equal this much.
Money.
It's these assumptions that get us to here.
Correct.
Now, if you, if you hire one firefighter a month from now, they come on staff, and two firefighters have retired since that number was put in, and another one's scheduled to go there, and then another one's going to come in a month after that, and another one, at what point you cross that line, I don't know, as far as what matters. I understand that the idea that we're going to hire 14 people clearly is beyond that. At the same time, I don't know what happened if the, if we had gotten to fact finding conciliation and a conciliator handed down an opinion that said, they're going up to the numbers that are in the contracts, and they're getting a 5% raise, and they're getting extra Kelly days, and they only need, they, they can have as many as five people per shift off, you know, those kinds of numbers. That could easily have cost a lot more than this. So, what would have happened at that point, I don't know. So, we're in uncharted water as far as, oh, the mayor's going to go and follow the terms of the contracts versus what's in the fiscal recovery plan, other than clearly, we have 45 days to come up with something that keeps us within the fiscal recovery plan one way or the other.
As part of the meeting today, we reviewed the, there was, the water fund analysis was done. April Davis had someone from their office pull accounts and look at billing and the amount that was paid to make sure it went into correct accounts. They did an analysis of that and felt very comfortable that when payments are made to the water, for water and sewage, they're put into the proper accounts. I asked about the sewage surplus, which is like, so now they're going to do another analysis that from 2010 to 2017, revenues exceeded expenses, but for some reason, in 2017, that didn't happen. So, they're looking at the water fund, there was some discussion about how we're not covering our costs, and I was like, oh my God, you know, like, hell hath no fury like residents when their water bills go up and the Cincinnati raised ours three, but we raised our, raised the water three, but we raised, council rose 5% to cover those expenses because we have to maintain those systems and we have to, you know, do all the testing and things. So, they're going to look at the water fund. I asked about the surplus in the sewer fund because we get accused of hiding money in the sewer fund all the time. It's not possible, it's money that has come in. And so, other, Ms. Davis said that we could petition the tax, the Hamilton County Tax Commission to move some of that surplus from the sewer fund into the water fund to cover that shortage. I assured her that that was likely council's wish to do that, and so, they, she will be working with the auditor to look at that process and eventually come, probably come to you all with legislation that asks to do that. But I did ask her to begin that process to move that surplus out of the sewer fund into the water fund to bring that more into compliance so that we can start with a clean slate and see where the current rates, if the current rate, water rates cover what we're paying right now. Just looking at all my notes to see if I can tell you anything else. Most of the expenses that, most of the departments are within line with expenses. There are some that are just slightly exceeding, and those are usually due to debt payments or one-time payments. The exception was the retirees, help, help of the retirees' plan, that was at 93% of what was expected, and at five months, you would expect to spend about 42%. But as I explained to them, the process for the retirees' benefit program is mostly completed. I let them know that in the beginning, when I got the first list of people from renovation, there were 182 people on there, some of which were deceased. But we did send them out to all, we sent applications out to all of those that we knew were living. We sent them out to everybody unless we knew they were deceased. Sent those out, if we hadn't received them back, sent them three times. We did receive one application that was late, a person who did qualify, but clearly dated the application April 26th, which was beyond the March deadline. To date, there are 140 people who received the checks. There are three people who filed appeals. The administrative committee did meet and heard those appeals, and we are, were awaiting opinions from the law department, which I just received tonight, so I'll be sharing those with the members of the administrative committee, and we'll have final decisions on the three appeals. So, most of the money, that, that's the reason that that key was well over the expenditure, but there shouldn't be any more expenditures once those three appeals are finished. So, that was the meeting in a nutshell. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President, for your recap. Thanks for the update on the water fund analysis. I know that was a long time coming, and thank you for anticipating we might want to deal with that by exercising the petition. So, it sounded like you said that is something that would get prepared potentially coming back to us for final approval as legislation?
I would imagine that would probably have to happen. It's kind of uncharted territory for us. She said that other municipalities have petitioned the tax commission. I don't know if it's going to require legislation, but I asked her to, to begin looking at that process, and if we needed to do legislation, that, that we prepare that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
I was reasonably certain that we would pass that in the first night. So, I, I don't know, Mr. Moore, you don't, you probably don't have any more ideas.
Never done one.
So, that's my report. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we have a letter drawn to the mayor stating that we would like to see the, his plan, financial recovery plan by our next council meeting. That would be Tuesday, July 9th.
Second, second by Mr. Clark. Any discussion? Mr. Thompson.
I think it would be fine if we say that it's in rough form.
Please?
I think it would be fine if we said that it was in rough form, it doesn't have to be final.
Yeah, in rough format. Got it. We might want to send a copy to the financial advisors so they know that they need to act quickly. Mr. Bonzal?
And could we send a copy just to every member of the Financial Recovery Commission as well?
On the commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, whether it be by email or whatever.
Mr. Clark, you agree to that?
Yes, absolutely.
So, we're sending a letter to the mayor with a copy to the commission members as well as the financial advisors. Rough draft is, go ahead. Mr. Thompson.
Add a courtesy copy to the auditors, please. Courtesy copy to the auditors.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion? Thankfully, that went off. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, motion carries. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three items, so I will gladly rotate if needed. The first is a follow-up from a couple meetings back. I shared out that I had a chance to meet with Paycor and that they were reimagining their hiring process as it relates to having us dedicate a time to hire Norwood residents. So, I'm excited to share that residents can save the date. August 20th, there's going to be a hiring fair at Paycor for Norwood residents. It's going to take place between 4:30 and 7:00 PM. There's more that will be shared about this in time, but if you show up, you will have a chance to pre-register, so not just walk in. Everyone gets an interview. I think in the past, there may have been a trend towards certain teams, but they're really interested in, in aligning people with their talent pipeline. And so, I'm very excited. They shared with me some of their promotion opportunities, and they're going to do some cool, neat things this year. I think we said a while back that they are sponsoring the Norwood Day Parade this year and will be in it as well. So, I'm just thankful that they are a fun collaborator. So, it will be a hiring event at Paycor for Norwood residents, August 20th, 4:30 to 7:00. So, if you can, if you're interested, save the date now, and more will come in terms of how to participate in that. of how to participate in that.
Thank you. Go on.
Great. This is good stuff. So, back by popular demand, please save the date for Saturday, August 3, for Shakespeare in the Park. Romeo and Juliet is coming back to Upper Millcrest Park. Again, that's Shakespeare in the Park, Saturday, August 3. The application's been submitted to the city, and Shakespeare Company is holding that date likely 7:00 p.m. So for our next regular council meeting, I should have the finalized time, but it will be that day, Saturday, August 3, Upper Millcrest Park, Romeo and Juliet. And if you're listening and that sounds exciting, last year, we had a food truck come. I've put a request out to get other ideas for food trucks. So if you're listening and you're like, no, I'd rather just it be like a picnic thing, I'd love feedback. Do people want a food truck? Would you rather just do dinner on your own? It's something we can do again. Just want to know if that's of interest. If you have a thought, please contact me.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the last one, today's Tuesday, Thursday this week, two days from now, we're having the Ward One Community Council meeting. So just a reminder to everyone, this meeting is actually taking place at Gold Star at University Station. It's because residents who've attended in the past wanted to travel around the ward. So if you're interested, come join me for dinner. I'll be there at 6:30. If you recall, when I first got on council, we'd do coffee with council, and we'd meet over at Brick once a month. This is kind of a reiteration of that, but it's focused on Ward One. Anyone's welcome. It's a public establishment. Our focus is development. There will be a planning commission meeting tomorrow, and so hopefully some of the updates that come out of that as they relate to Montgomery will be available to be shared at that meeting. And then if you want to just come for the meeting, that's 7:00, dinner 6:30. And if you just want to come for dessert, we are going to Grater's afterward. So all are welcome, that can fit inside or outside. And I think tomorrow, or was it yesterday, Grater's unveiled their newest flavor?
Yesterday.
Was it yesterday? I haven't looked. Does anybody know what it is?
Honey something.
Yeah, honey.
Honeycomb or...
Honeycomb?
Beeswax.
I don't know.
Well, I look forward to finding that out. So that is all I have for new business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Just update. We were talking earlier about Forest Avenue. The major construction has been completed from Highland down to Norwood, and the base coat has been put down. That will set for a short period of time before the finished coat is put on top of that. So that is going to be nice.
Drove down it today, and it's wonderful.
It will be even better in the wintertime for sled riding.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other new business?
That sounds dangerous.
New business? All right. Well, we went to communications. The first is a letter from Jim Stith regarding monthly financial reports.
To Norwood City Council, pursuant to the recommendations of the Auditor of State in the Report on Accounting Methods, each month, upon the completion of the monthly financial report, copies of the reports will be sent via email to all department heads and elected officials for their review. Each month, the receipt of such reports shall be recorded in the minutes of city council. Sincerely, Jim Stith, Auditor, City of Norman.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we receive and file the letter and acknowledge receipt of the May 2019 financial reports.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter, I probably should have read this earlier, a letter from Joe Gears regarding Section Avenue Improvements.
Dear Mrs. Lake and members of council, on Thursday, June 20, we had bid openings for the Section Avenue Improvements project. Enclosed, please find a letter from JMA Consultants listing the base bids and the alternate bids from four different companies. We have asked the law department to prepare an ordinance to authorize the service safety director to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder. Please review the enclosed and advise me what you would like to do. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Joseph C. Gears, Director, Public Service Safety.
Mr. Thompson?
Move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Tim Maloney regarding bank reconciliation from March 2019.
Dear council members attached, please find the bank reconciliation from March 2019. Sincerely, Tim Maloney, Treasurer.
Mr. Clark?
Move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? This is reviewed every month by the commission as well. The funds that are in the STAR Ohio investment accounts have to go into the general fund or to the street fund or the state highway fund. So we are earning some interest on that. And there is still a unresolved, like $3,491 that are just unresolved issues that they can't reconcile. That number has been coming down each month as they either find checks that weren't cashed or whatever. So just to let you know that this is reviewed by the commission as well. Any discussion? Motion on the floor is to receive and file the report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chief Wallace regarding the ladder truck.
Dear members of Norwood City Council and city administration, I wanted to make note of a situation we experienced this past Friday, June 21, 2019. On that, that day, it was found that the 1996 Seagrave Ladder Truck batteries were being overcharged. The on-duty fire captain contacted Norwood Public Works Garage, and Nate responded immediately and found the alternator needed to be replaced. After making a few calls, we were given the bad news that because of the age of the truck, a new alternator isn't available. It was suggested we take the existing alternator to JNN Electric and have it rebuilt. This is currently being done. As a result, our command staff has made arrangements with St. Bernard Fire Department to respond with their ladder if we request mutual aid. If they are unavailable, we will request a ladder from Cincinnati Fire. My main reason for sending this email is I want to publicly thank Mr. Pete Tepey and mechanic Nate from Norwood Public Works for their assistance and willingness to help us out over this past weekend. Nate, knowing the importance of having our ladder truck in service, offered to make arrangements to replace the alternator as soon as we received a new one or if the rebuilt part was, part was sent back. Nate asked me to contact Mr. Tepey to make certain this would be permissible. I contacted Mr. Tepey, and without hesitation, he approved the request from me. Often, we hear how one city department is more important than another, especially during our current fiscal crisis. The city of Norwood is a machine that is here to provide necessary services to every resident and business in Norwood. The machine is only operable if all parts work together. This situation proves most every problem can be solved with cooperation, mutual respect, and teamwork. Sincerely, Ron Wallace, Fire Chief, Norwood Fire Department.
Mr. Thompson?
Move we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate the letter and great job, Mr. Nate, for your work on that. I just, that first sentence and the last paragraph, often we hear how one city department is more important than another, especially during our current fiscal crisis. And I'm just surprised to hear that from this specific department, is all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other discussion? Motion is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Ms. Stevenson?
I move that reiterating.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?